All right, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call the work session to order. Tonight, we'll be talking about code updates. Staff recommends introduction of a comprehensive code modernization package that updates Lansing property maintenance standards to the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, consolidates related health, business, and building provisions for clarity, and establishes a streamlined enforcement tools, including a rental property registry and standardized inspection procedures to enhance neighborhood viability and align the city's regulations with contemporary best practices. So Josh, you must be the speaker tonight.
I am the speaker, but I have the guys who have actually done the hard work on this one out with me here. Dan and Bill have gone through the code. What we're looking at tonight is, if I can make this work, four different types of changes. We want to introduce the first in a series of code updates. So we're gonna, in this case, we're talking about two different codes. We have our municipal code, and inside of our municipal code, we have also adopted a number of building codes, fire codes, electricity or electric codes. One of those is the Property Maintenance Code, right? So that is a code that is built by the ICC, the International Code Council, and we are proposing that we move from the 2003 to 2018 addition of the International Property Maintenance Code. Then we're going to look at or discuss the rental registration program idea that we have, that we're going to present tonight. Then we will go back to our, our actual municipal code, and we're gonna present a couple of updates at a, let's call it 10,000-foot view. And to gauge your interest and desire to do these things, and then, inside of the municipal code, there are a number of things that we need to clean up in terms of referencing, the code still references departments and divisions in the city that haven't existed for 10-plus years. There is contradictory language when we're talking about specifically the code enforcement items that one code will say, hey, you can have your car here, but then you go a couple of sections, and then it says, wait, you can't, you can't park your car there. So a couple of those type of things that we'll, we'll talk about in brief. Tonight, I don't have a, I don't have draft language for you to review. There's a couple of things that if you have the desire to take these on, will require a little bit more work, and we will present them to you at a, obviously, a later date, if that makes sense. So the main goal is just alignment and simplification where we can of our municipal code, right? We want to make sure that these codes are aligned with your priorities for neighborhood quality, public safety, streamlined enforcement. And then, kind of most importantly for everybody, we want to ensure that city staff has clear enforcement actions. Bill has a very, very tough job. Dan does too. But Bill especially lives in a very gray area, very gray world at sometimes. And so some of the purposes of, of these updates is to make those less gray and more black and white. And then we want to simplify. Again, there's sections that we can either get rid of, because did you know currently the city of Lansing requires that every single window in this city have an insect screen, a bug screen?
A what?
A bu, a, a screen. Seems weird. Those type of things, maybe we can get rid of, you know? Maybe, maybe a little bit overregulation. So we're about, we're about removing regulations where it makes sense. Code enforcement, this isn't just about correcting violations. Really, when you, when you enter into a city that cares about its codes and how they get enforced, it does set a level of civic pride, right? And especially as we look to bring in new investment from, from outside or convince the people of Lansing to invest in the community. As we move forward, we want to be able to have clear expectations and be able to enforce consistently across the, across the city. So we are requesting feedback from you on a couple of these things, or all of these things. First off, change to the, to the actual code. So this is actually draft language. The, this is the original, the black is the original text, and then the red underlined is, are things that we would like to, to add to the chronic nuisance, okay? Currently, right now, to become a chronic nuisance, a property needs to have a second citation for where a maintenance code or nuisance violation is issued. So that means Bill goes out and actually issues a citation, which comes at the end of a period of time, 30 days or more of engagement, interaction, trying to, to bring the, the property up to spec. A second abatement, so generally, that only happens with grass, grass that is too high. We don't generally abate anything else other than that for various and sundry reasons, but mainly due to its interesting sending people, especially people who are not part of the city, out to somebody's house and property to do things based off of just citations. We would prefer to have court-ordered abatements, generally speaking. That's a long process. We generally don't get there. Bill is very good about getting, getting properties up, up to spec. And then what we're at, we're, so we have two ways right now. We have a second citation or a second abatement, and now we are trying, we are looking to add any combination of abatements and citations where there have been four or more violation notices. So no citations issued, but if Bill is going out and four times in a year, he has a violation dropped, he sends out a violation letter, we would like to get to a point where that would be enough to put somebody on a chronic nuisance, the chronic nuisance list. What does that mean? It means we can start adding more fees to help increase the stick to get people to abide by our codes.
What's the difference between a violation notice and a citation?
So a violation is, Mr. Gardner, your grass is too, too tall in your, your property, you have 10 days to fix the problem. The, the citation is, Mr. Gardner, this is now the third, fourth, sometimes fifth or sixth time I've talked to you, your grass is still now three feet tall and is still not in compliance with the code. I've waited the period of 10 days, and here is your citation, you need to show up in court. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
If we were to, if we were to implement this today, how many people would be on this list?
That's an excellent question. Bill?
Just to guess, I just, it, it, there would be people on the list if implemented today. If I went based off what we have today, I have at least four residences that I have to issue nothing less than three violation letters a year, two every summer.
Okay.
Maybe this would be a good point to stop. You have Billy's latest with the newer guys. He gets a call or an email, he goes out and it's a violation.
Bring us here up.
And then where do we go from there?
Sure.
I'll lay, we'll lay the whole thing.
Okay. Basically, I can accept complaints in any number of versions. They can come in and talk to me. They can send something in through the website on the city, or they can call and things. We have people, just about any way they can get information to me, they can begin what's called an initial complaint. Some folks send me photos and things like that, too. If you send it in an email, I do include the email as part of my report to show what was sent to me, and if the citizen wants to remain anonymous, they have to tell me in the email that they want to remain anonymous. Otherwise, their name, their phone numbers, and their email addresses are included into the report for that information. Once they send me that information, then I will go out and look at the situation, based on what training I had through the, the case conference and things. It's not recommended that we use other people's photographs and stuff of that nature to do the entire basis of the complaint on. So I will go to the location, I will look at it from what's called a public standpoint view, which means I'm on public property, and I'm not using any special equipment like ladders or standing in the back of people's trucks and things of that nature, and I will take my own photographs to document that. And the iPad and the camera that I use are date and timestamp, so they know exactly when I was there and where I was. What I'll do then is I will go back to the office, and I will type up a violation letter that includes all the information they need for the violation at hand. It explains to them the process of what they need to do to get things taken care of, tells them that they have 10 calendar days from the date that they received the letter to get things corrected. It also explains to them the process of what will happen if they don't get it corrected within the proper amount of time. And it usually includes photos, too, so that they can see exactly what I was seeing that constitutes the violation. And then the letters are sent out or delivered in one of multiple ways. I send out a certified mail letter and a first-class mail letter, which complies with the state statute for delivery process. Or if it's a residence that I've not had any trouble with or confrontations with, I have the ability to do tacking, which means I will actually take it up, and I will tape the letter to the front door of the house, take a photograph of it, and then I will send them a first-class letter that lets them know that I stopped by their residence. There's a letter attached to their house, and then if they have questions, they can call, or I can do personal service. Most of the people that I deal with are gone during the daytime, so personal service typically does not happen. I basically keep everything documented in the system through our iWorks program, and I give them their 10 days. At the end of the 10 days, usually on the 11th day, I will drive by the house, and if everything is in compliance, I take photographs of it, show that it's in compliance, I update my paperwork, and I close out the case. If it's not in compliance, as a courtesy, even though I'm not required to do it, I will try and make some contact with the homeowner or the tenant to find out what the situation is, and if they have some kind of a justifiable reason, I do have the ability to give some extension time, just because sometimes some of the things that these people need to work on takes more than 10 days to get corrected. And as long as they're making some effort to work on things and they're doing what they need to, I don't mind working with them a little bit. Ultimately, if they don't get it corrected, then I can issue a citation, which will require them to appear in court and see the judge, and he would have the decision of how things are handled by there. Or I can file a complaint with the court clerk, who then it goes to Catalina, and she can go ahead and order the court clerk to issue a letter for them, requiring them to appear in court. And then the judge will decide how much extension time they want to give them. If anything, he can impose the fines. If he wants to order an abatement, then I can get an order from him to require me to go on property and abate it at our cost. And if the abatement happens, basically what happens is, is one of the most common ones I've had to abate is grass. If I have to abate someone's yard for grass, I pay a crew, a local crew to go in and mow the yard. They send me a bill, and then I send an invoice and a bill to the resident or the property owner of that, that structure, which includes the fees, which can range anywhere from $250 to $400 per residence, depending upon how big the lot is. And then there's a, it's either, I don't remember off the top of my head, $100 or $150 assessment fee that goes on top of that. They have 30 days to pay that. If they don't pay that, then I file paperwork with Beth to have it put on their tax docket with the county and their tax assessments.
Are we allowed to fly drones? No, we're not.
No.
No. So that's one of those sticking points. He, he mentioned that he's not able to stand on ladders. He can't even, it gets gray using zoom on cameras, so generally, it's stand there with either the iPad or the camera, and just turn it on and click, click the shutter.
If you were to complain to me about the grass being too tall in your neighbor's yard, and they have a six-foot privacy fence, I have to have your consent or a neighbor's consent that has a general view from the back of their property to where I could come out onto your deck and stand on your deck and see over their fence to be able to enforce that. If I can't see it, I can't enforce it.
That was my point. You can't see it. You could with a drone, but you can't do that.
There, there are some cities and other states that are using drones for this kind of stuff, but there is a lot of legal interpretation going on between them. I don't know how long any of that would last, but I don't know of any state, cities in Kansas that are using them.
So until somebody decides to push the issue and then deal with the, the legal cases, and until case law gets established, either in the state of Kansas or there's a federal some odd regulation regarding that, we stay away from that as much as possible. So what, what he, Bill also didn't say is that during the, let's call it negotiation phase, if somebody's continuing to work, we, I, I encourage this because once Bill issues a citation and somebody says, we tell them, hey, you gotta show up in court, compliance just generally comes to a screeching halt, because they say, don't care, I'm gonna go talk to the judge about this, right? And so I'm gonna wait until the judge says I need to do something, right? So there is, there is ample reason to continue to, if somebody is continuing, albeit sometimes very slowly, but if they're continuing to do the work to clean things up, Bill is, is able and, and willing to, to do that.
What was interesting, if you say it's anonymous, where they can make it anonymous, but they have to tell you?
Yes.
Because I've talked with people before who have said, no.
Well, like, like if...
Am I gonna put it in an email?
If, if they do the email on the website and want to do it, where it says first and last name, they just need to write anonymous or choose not to provide. Leave the phone number blank, put zeros in there. But if they tell me it's anonymous, then, then I don't include the email. I save the email, but I do not include it in the case file, and I document in my initial notes that it was provided by an anonymous source.
Yeah, because I bet someone wouldn't do it, and then they look at me like, oh, you know, hey, if you want me to do it, I'll do it. But, but that's why people don't do it. They're afraid that, that their neighbor's gonna find out it was them and possibly create more problems than they had to start with.
Well, from the court's perspective of it, if you send it in, you're the one's name that gets put in the report, and if it did go to a court situation, you would be the one that got subpoenaed to testify. So, and, and, and a lot of people don't want to do that either, so I, I understand that. I just need them, when they send something in or they leave a voice message, to physically tell me I want to remain anonymous, because I, I save the voicemails, I save the emails, I just don't include them in the report if they tell me they want to be anonymous.
The other thing that we did is in the software that we're using to take the photographs with, I use the same software that Bill does now that we put on our new iPads. It's georeference, so if it ever comes up that we took these photos from somebody's private property, the georeference point will prove that we are not on their property. So these are 100% admissible into court, stamp, time, date, everything embedded into the photo that can't be modified. So that's a change we made this year just to back our side.
So you get a violation, and you go out, and you give them a, a letter, and you go back 11 days later and check it? Is that when you make a decision whether to issue a citation or, or?
Well, based on our policy, I do not have to give them any consideration for anything, weather, time, work schedule, medical issues, nothing. If they're not compliant at the end of the 10 days, I can issue a citation, or I can issue a letter to the court with the case file and ask them to, ask Catalina to review it, and then she can give Gail the okay to issue a notice to appear in a letter. Most people around here, we do have a lot of elderly folks, we do have a lot of folks that I, that have, take care of disabled people, and like I said before, we do have some folks that have had things on their property that have been there for 10, 12, 15 years, and there's no physical way that they're gonna be able to get it cleaned up in any reasonable amount within the 10 days. So I try and make contact with them, just for courtesy sake, to see what they have to say about things. And if they give me a, some type of a reasonable explanation of things, then I let them know, you know, you're facing a $500 fine for each violation. If you're willing to work with me, I'll work with you and help you out a little bit to get some things taken care of. I do have three residences that are in long term. One of them was working very well with us until he chose not to cooperate, and there's a court case pending against him. I have another gentleman that's moving very slow. He's in his late 60s, early 70s, and he's doing it by himself, but he's making progress when I go out and drive by the property. And I have another gentleman that was making progress, and then his house caught on fire, and so everything relevant to him is kind of in limbo until they figure out what's gonna happen with the house fire. So it, it's all done on a case-by-case basis. Some people I don't give an extension to, some people I work with, because like Josh had said, most people, when I explain to them, you're gonna have to come to court, you're gonna face a $500 fine for each violation, most of them take a little more of an interest in getting things cleaned up.
Do you do anything different when it's a renter versus a homeowner?
No.
Do you notify the owner that it's happening?
Yes. There, I, I can notify any one of three people. I can notify the tenant, I can notify the property owner, or I can notify the property management company. Ultimately, the person that carries the ultimate responsibility is the property owner. So as long as I have contact information for the property owner and I can find out who they are, then I will issue a letter to the property owner and the tenant, so that they're both aware of it, and they go from there. If I can't find them, but there's a property management company, then a letter will go to the property management company, because they have the ability to speak on behalf of the owner and help get the situation corrected.
That kind of ties in with what we're gonna talk about a little bit, too.
Ken, can you put the, can you click the mouse back on the PowerPoint?
Thank you. So that's the chronic nuisance. We're opening up the ability that we have to, again, increase the stick to try to encourage more compliance, if somebody wants to be somebody who takes a lot of Bill's time. And then that question about renters does tie in nicely to, to this next line. The rental registration, this would be a shift in how we've done things prior, and so this is one of the big things we wanted to talk to you about tonight. Bill runs into a lot of rentals, and it is sometimes extremely difficult to get good information on both the tenant and the owner. When he doesn't have good information, it's almost impossible to get compliance, right? So why do we need a rental registration and property management program? We need this program to maintain an accurate owner slash agent contact and a verified inventory of rentals, so that problems can be resolved quickly and safely. It creates accountability and usable data for targeted education and enforcement, improving neighborhood quality while keeping the process fair for the responsible landlords, right? So there are, are a number of ways that we could go about this, but what, at very basis, basic, what we're looking for is a one-time registration per owner, per rental that they have in the city of Lansing. We will need, if they have, as I'm sure you're aware, landlords sometimes have different LLCs for each individual property, or they'll put five under this LLC and another five under this LLC or something to that, right? If they do have multiple LLCs, we want all of them registered. And then if somebody is an absentee owner, and we're gonna define that as anything greater than 45 minutes away, we want to know who their local contact is. Are they, do they have a property management company? Is they, do they have a contract with just some guy to take care of small things that come up? We need to have somebody that we can get in contact with quickly, who can get to the property within 40, 45 minutes, and deal with, with the items here that we, that we need addressed. There are a number of houses throughout, there's one who actually is not in country, and getting compliance with that house is non-existent, right? But for those who are even outside of, you know, the metro area, the state, we appreciate people's interest in providing rental, rental houses in Lansing, but we do need to have a way of being able to make sure that we can, we have somebody we can contact to say, hey, your gra, the grass of this property is out of control, you've got fences lying down on the, on the sidewalk, you, whatever it may be, your, your tenants are...
So how do you get them to register?
So that'll be an interesting process. We will be able to utilize some of the city's utility information to be able to cross-reference with what property owners are listed through the county. We will start an education program, being able to, to work with the tenants, and also be able to send out letters and mailings to the property owners themselves.
Why can't you find out the owner of a property through the registrar of deeds?
You, we can, and we, we, we use the, we use the Leavenworth County's online GIS system. I have access to the register of deeds. It's called Laredo, but that database of, of information where every document that is recorded, I have access to that, and we've utilized that. Where the problem lies is that when it points to an LLC that is a shell company, essentially, and there's no contact information, there's little contact information to be found online, they don't respond to, we can't find a phone number, they don't respond to an email or, sorry, a letter or emails, if we can find an email address. But there are, there are multiple companies that, that we don't, we just don't get.
And the county sends a tax notice, no address?
Well, for, for some examples of some of the, the things I've encountered, there are two, three houses here in the city where the current resident listed has been deceased for three to five years or more, and they're listed on the county GIS as being the current owner and resident of the property. One of the houses is tied up in probate court, so nothing will change, but the house has actually changed possession four or five times by family. We have others that there's no address, or they're only, instead of asking for a physical address, they're accepting a PO box number, which interferes with me, because I'm required to send certified mail out at $7 to $9 a letter, knowing that they cannot deliver certified mail to a PO box. So I, I basically have to go through the 25-day-long process to wait for that letter to come back to me. The other situation we have, like Josh was talking about with the shell company, is there is a group of real estate folks that have an office in Texas, and they're all housed in the exact same building with the same address, and they own several properties here in town. And they're constantly trading who has the deed to that property, and they don't change any of that with the records. And not trying to, to slam the county, but it takes, we've got some houses that it takes several months for them to get stuff updated in the records to the county. So I send a lot of mail out and get phone calls from people telling me I haven't owned that house in two years, and that's who the listed owner and current resident is. Some utility of the billing stuff here in the city, I have a residence here where I couldn't tell you who lives in the house, because the owner lives in Leavenworth, and they keep all the utilities in their name. So I have to send letters to the homeowner, and I have no idea who lives there. So it, it's just that kind of stuff that it adds to the time I have to take to try and track people down and sort out who they are. So I'm not wasting $40 worth of mail sending out for it to come back a week or two down the road, or get a phone call that tell me this isn't them, and then I have to stretch this case out even further, trying to get notifications done.
Yeah, I understand the issue. How is this gonna solve that? So how are you gonna, I mean, but you gotta do the same thing. You gotta go try and find who in the heck owns it.
Sure.
They don't have it with the registrar of deeds, you know, at the county or whatever, so how, they're not gonna, shell companies, they're gonna voluntarily, like, you know, hey, I'm John Doe, the CEO of a company, gonna put it on our website, on our database. I don't see how it's gonna solve it.
So this is not necessarily a thing that is, we're not reinventing the wheel here, right? So there are other cities in this county and across the country that have these type of programs. We can add fees to this, we could add fees for non-compliance. It will take a, it will take work to get this database up and running. It will take work to get this to, to a place where, where it is, is usable, but instead of Bill running, running around, doing this, this work for no real reason, we're gonna be able to establish, this is how we do things within Lansing. If you want to have rentals here, this is how you're, this is what you need.
Yeah, and once you get them in the database, and, and you have, say, a... Once you get them in the database and you have, say, they know there's a fine or a fee or something, if they don't update you, like, hey, we sold that property to whoever. I mean, I see it working then. It's going to be tough to get the database. I mean, right now, it's tough to just identify anybody, but I guess.
The quickest ways for it to start would be someone comes in to register for their utilities with the city. We start asking, is this a rental or do you own the house? If they say it's a rental, then as part of that information they provide, we start requiring them to provide the landlord's name at a bare minimum. And if you want to, add a phone number in there. Then, like Josh said, we can track down some of the landlords we have just because we've had to deal with them before and things like that. And when that landlord comes in to register their properties, they would need to provide us name, address, phone number, email address. And as part of that ordinance, if there's any changes to that, they would be required under the ordinance to update that within 30 calendar, within 30 calendar days. Or they would be in violation of it and then they could be cited for not maintaining an up-to-date record. And it would fall for them also on their property maintenance people if they live more than 40 or 45 minutes away and they have one property management company in Lansing and then they switch it to one in Leavenworth, then they've only got 30 calendar days to notify us of the name of the company, their address and phone number so that we have that on file. And like Josh said, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, but it would give us a start that we can start getting this done. And as I find these companies and these landlords, I can send a letter out to them that says, we are initiating a rental registration act. This is what you need to do to get into compliance. I would keep track of when that letter's mailed out and we could add a timeframe on there that you have 30, you have 60 calendar days to get your properties registered. We can charge a fee. We can keep it a free registration just to get them to be more compliant with it. But we would need to make it a violation. So if we get someone that's continuously not doing what they need to do, we can get them in here and make them take responsibility for it. Then if they sell the property, the new owner would only have 30 days, 30 calendar days to come in and pay whatever fee, if there is one, to register that property in their name.
And this would not be something that we, you know, come back with a, an amendment next week and say, hey, look, here's the thing, let's just, let's roll this out now, right? This would be a conversation that we would need to start with the landlords in the community, with the property management companies within the community, with a time horizon of somewhere probably minimum of a couple of months before we roll this out. So this was a exploratory, what do you guys think about this type thing as an introduction?
I think it's a great idea. I've asked several times over the years, do this? And if you're not sure, Bill comes to my house tomorrow, I'll tell you who was what.
Well, the base program I used is actually one that the city of Leavenworth uses. And it took them quite a while to get it up, get people found and get it to a status that they're comfortable with. But now that they've had it for a while and it's up and rolling, they're glad they have it because it makes it easier trying to track people down.
I think it's a great idea. Appreciate the work you've done on it.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can get it going somewhere down the road.
You mentioned earlier that there were four chronic properties.
Yes.
But what's the scope of the problem for what we're talking about right now? Where people that are out of code.
The typical things are not cutting their grass or picking up their brush and tree limbs, outdoor storage, and inoperable vehicles. Those are typically the three biggest ones that I have. And most of the residences that I have continuous chronic issues with, it's not just one or the other, it's at least two or more issues for the property. And it's, matter of fact, I have one that I sent letters out on today that this is, this is the third time for 2025 that I've issued a violation letter. When I first took over at the beginning of 2024, they got three violation letters that year. And since 2019, they've had 23 violation complaints against them. So they fit the criteria for a chronic offender. But with our current policy, they have to be abated or cited and found guilty or some combination of that at least two or more times. The third time, then once they're convicted on the third time, then they can be placed on the chronic nuisance list.
I think you might be better served, instead of 40 or 45 minutes identifying some counties around Leavenworth County, I think that would remove some of the gray area because I might get somewhere faster in 45 minutes than Jesse.
Yeah. That's, that's fair.
I don't write those kinds of tickets anymore, so.
Do you have any idea, rough estimate, how much rental property there is?
I know one landlord in this town, based on what I could find, has 25 properties under his name. Now, I don't know if that's all of them, but, you know, I don't have a list of, I don't have a list from like Riley's, I don't have a list from Green and Myers. That's just a private citizen that is a rental entrepreneur. I know we have quite a few of the.
Sorry, I'm trying to.
I thought at one point we looked, maybe five years ago, and wasn't it like 35% of the city was rentals or something like that? Does that ring a bell?
Well, I've heard between 35 and it's not just in this part of town, it's all of it.
Yeah, it's distributed pretty easily. So the American Community Survey estimates that we have 81% of owner occupied, meaning, I can't do math right now, 19. 19% would be non-owner occupied. 36,000, give or take, housing units within Lansing, which means 29, 3,600, sorry, 3,600, thank you, 3,600. 3,600 and then about 2,900 would be owner occupied at that point. So rough figures, those are American Community, American Community Survey estimates, generally pretty accurate and the best data that we have on that type of thing.
You and I have talked before and there's roughly 7,000 some units housing. That's houses, apartments, mobile homes.
Well, about, yeah, about 3,600, yeah. So down a little bit from. Okay, sorry, I didn't, yeah, so.
What do we got total number wise? What do we think is rental?
Yeah, so that's about the best guess that we have. We could go back to the Lansing's infamous 2023 housing study. I think they have, but they're pulling, they're pulling from the same, same data set, so. They did not go through and give it, they did not knock on doors and go, hey, are you a renter or are you a homeowner? So there's, there's that. And then the, another change, I don't have a slide for this and I apologize for that. What we would like to do is move from the current IPMC, so the International Property Maintenance Code, to the more current, not fully current, but the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code. There's a couple of reasons for that. Mainly, it provides a good balance of adding some needed updates, carbon monoxide requirements or protection requirements, while also not being overly burdensome. The 2018 is a pretty good code to balance those things. Once you get into 2024, you really start looking at, 2021 and 2024, you start looking at some onerous requirements in certain circumstances. So we're looking at updating that code. And what we've done in the past, you can look at the code today and it says, City of Lansing hereby adopts the 20, the 2026 or 2006 International Property Maintenance Code with these revisions. And it's, the city means City of Lansing, Kansas, a couple of things like that. So we'd like to bring that to you guys as well. And those are the, those are the three.
Why wouldn't we update to the current?
Yeah, so it's one of those things, like, the ICC is about, the ICC is, and there are people, both Dan and Tom, who can speak to this a little bit better than I can. But there are a number of cities throughout the, a lot of cities throughout the country who have recognized, and maybe you remember hearing this specifically with the, with Kansas City, Missouri. Kansas City, Missouri recently adopted the 2024, I believe. And builders screamed very loudly about the requirements that were added because of the energy code in particular, right? There are updates to the more recent codes that added requirements that just meant that it was going to be, it was going to cost more for the builder, meaning it's going to cost more for the property owner. And they were not put in because of any health and safety issues. It was just, these are the changes we think you should make. We're, we are planning on moving from the 2006 building and residential and fire and electric codes to the 2018. And so in order to maintain consistency, we are proposing to adopt the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code.
I understand the consistency, you didn't answer my question though. Why wouldn't we go to the most current?
Because it does not, because it, the current.
Is it too restrictive?
Yes, yeah, yes.
What is the reason we wouldn't do that?
The 2024 is too restrictive. It adds requirements that are owner, that are too costly to builders and residents and is restrictive in ways I don't believe that are beneficial to the city.
It sounds like it raises costs for property owners pretty significantly if we went to the most current one. So our residents would be getting a pretty big bill every time they would try to bring something up to code. Whereas 2018, I think, brings it up, but isn't quite as onerous as the current one.
Most of the time when you are updating cycles, you tend to not try and jump more than three cycles. A cycle is a three-year period, so the codes are updated every three years. Most municipalities, most entities do not like jumping more than three cycles at a given time because the changes wind up being so drastic. If you go in and I go to update and remodel Mr. Garvey's house, now I've got this monster expense to just do a small little modification in his house because I got to go back through and I got to update all of this other stuff. The other part of it, and Tom absolutely can speak to this matter, is when you throw 2024 codes out, okay, that's the most current. 2021 came in and they changed the poly for underneath your concrete from six mils to 10 mils. 2024 came out the next cycle and it went right back. A lot of these things in the brand-new code jumped back and forth for a couple of cycles, trying to figure out if they really did what they intended them to do. So if you jump on the bandwagon and jump out and immediately change to the latest and greatest thing, it's like going and buying an electric vehicle, the first one that ever came out. Maybe that wasn't the best idea. So jumping on the brand-new code out always isn't always in your best interest because it can create a lot of issues. What we are trying to do is align ourselves a little bit closer with the other communities in the area. Most of the communities in the area around the Kansas City metro area are on the 2018 code. This aligns and gives us the ability for builders to come in, understand the requirements without me spending hours and hours with them back and forth debating on what the code should be and how to interpret it all because it's the same code they're using in Basar or they're using in Shawnee or anywhere, Overland Park or Glenwood or wherever. This aligns us better with our surrounding communities. And again, they'll be doing the same thing we'll be doing in 2018. Obviously, once we get this in place, we're going to have to start looking at updating again right after it pretty quick if we're going to maintain and keep up with the current cycles that are coming through. ICC starts as soon as they're done with one cycle, they start immediately and it takes a three-year process for them to get back to the next cycle. That's why cities don't jump on every cycle and go with them because you literally get one in and start over working on the next one. So it gives you a little bit of break, gives your contractors and the citizens a little bit of a period to understand what's going on and a little bit of a law.
And at this point, we are, we're looking just at the property maintenance. And so we're looking at things like fire department connection and signage and access requirements, not necessarily for, you know, residences, but for commercial buildings and smoke alarm upkeep and carbon monoxide protection items. Generally speaking, we don't use the IPMC for code enforcement actions per se, but it is nice, a nice tool and resource that we have to be able to bring properties into alignment, so.
Well, and I go, when they were building our house, which was, I guess I won't say the name on 311 here, but he's been here, he's done work.
Right.
He knew what he had to do.
Right.
He'd just been working here.
Right.
I have to do it this way, which is fine. But yeah, it makes it easier for them. There were some things I didn't understand, but once, you know, or the builder would sit down with me and say, not genius, why we're going to do this.
Right. And at some point in the near future, we are going to be bringing a larger, much, much larger code amendments regarding the building, the actual building codes to you guys. But that's, they're here and they're there. But we'll get there eventually. So those were the three big things, IPMC, rental registration, and the chronic nuisance. I want to briefly touch on the kind of general fixes. There are a list of 10 here. We can run through these and then I'd like to see what the general consensus is on whether or not we should continue with these and move on from there. So codified, number one, codified requirements for trash pickup utilizing contract language. What we want to do is put some of the language regarding keeping your trash lid closed from the current, our current contract with waste management and just put it into our code so that Bill has the ability to use that language to make sure that people are actually taking, taking care of their property, right? Just one more ability that he has to be able to say, you're not in compliance. Let's make sure that you stay in compliance. Number two.
Can I, can I ask a question about that one? Doesn't it say right now you can't keep your trash cans out in front of your yard? I thought it did.
They're supposed to be, you can't, yeah, can't be out before 7:05 or 9:00 or 10:00.
Right.
Yeah, you can only set, you can only set.
I thought it said it had to be behind the house or on the side of the house, not in front of the house.
Behind the front line, I think is.
Yeah, behind the front line, that's what it is, yeah. And there are a lot, and I mean a lot, properties in Lansing. You just park them right on the driveway for the full week until the next trash day, drag them off the curb, then drag them right back to the garage, right out in front of the driveway.
Sure.
And no offense, don't take this the wrong way, but if we're not going to enforce that, how can we enforce this?
Sure. That's, that's an excellent question.
Okay, move on.
No, that, that's the type of feedback we're looking for. So I appreciate that. So number two, add location requirements for electric pet fence. When people, we want to have in the code, when people add an electric pet fence, we want that to be 12 inches off of the property line, just so that it's not interfering with the property line. Strengthen the unauthorized parking requirements. So this one, we want to be able to add into the language that if it, if a vehicle meets the definition of junk or inoperable, we, Bill would be able to use that as a, as a, as a violation, as a nuisance.
Who determines what is junk?
There is a definition of junk and inoperable. There is, there has to be. If not, I mean, there, there is a strong case to be made that my car is a piece of junk. So, you know, like some, but it is operable, but it might meet that definition of junk. So your definition of junk might be different from mine, so therefore we have a definition of junk in the regulations.
We all banged up and you have four different kinds of tires, but as long as you can drive it.
For, for a car to be inoperable, it's got to have either an expired registration, no insurance, or not legally operationable on a public roadway.
Which is why all long-term cars and trucks are backed in.
They're backed in because I can't see the tags. And as long as the tires are up, the hood's down and there's nothing hanging out from underneath of it that tells me that's probably the driveshaft or a transmission, it makes it difficult for me to enforce. One of the changes that we were going to recommend on this is our current ordinance says in excess of 20 days, which means. says in excess of 20 days, which means technically if Gene calls and tells me about a car with a flat tire, I have to give them another 20 days of observation before I can cite them for that violation. One of the things I'd like to do is reduce it down to zero days or knock the number down to five or seven, something that's gonna give me a little bit of an opportunity to take more reaction. Cause right now, the only thing that I take immediate action on for an inoperable vehicle is if, is if the tags are expired, or if it's clearly inoperable, like one that I had, it was on Jackson, it had all the rotors and the brakes taken off of it, no engine in there. It's obviously not going anywhere, and I've pushed my luck and issued the letter for that, but by our, our ordinance now, if I play by the letter of it, even if that vehicle's sat there for two months, I have to give them another 20 days of observation before I can issue them a letter.
Is broken glass a violation?
No.
No. Cause you can operate a vehicle with broken windshield.
I, I, I can, I can get them for trash or outdoor storage for leaving the broken glass all over the ground.
Right.
But I can't get it for an inoperable vehicle.
Right.
To, to the-
Drive my car with a broken windshield.
Right.
Well, it, it gets into the criteria of whether a windshield's required for a vehicle or not, because you have a lot of these people driving these three-wheel buggies around that as long as they're wearing a helmet and eye protection, it kinda falls under the same standard as a motorcycle.
You don't have to have a helmet.
Yeah, exactly. So not to like get too pedantic on this, but-
Yeah.
A junk vehicle means any vehicle which is wrecked, scrapped, ruined, partially dismantled, inoperative, abandoned, and/or without a valid automobile license tag. So that's the definition of junk vehicle. So, so that was three and four, parking requirements, and then reduce the number of days. Again, we will, at-
Was there a bottom number of days to, to go from like 20 to seven then, to five?
My, my recommendation was gonna be five.
Five. Zero was thrown out.
I want zero.
The one thing I will say, I mean, there, there are times when people, I need to be careful, cause I'm thinking about the example you gave me-
Yeah.
-a while back. I don't, I-
Zero.
People would be pretty strict. Zero would be-
You gotta finish now if you can.
Well, I think the, the example I'm thinking of-
People take advantage of the system now.
I agree with that. I think the, the example I'm thinking of, that Josh had mentioned to me a while back, where the, the vehicle was, it was not junk, but the property owner's tags were a year or two out of compliance, and for whatever reason, he didn't wanna register his vehicle. And I think we got complaints from the neighbor about it.
Yeah.
And, but I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't a junk vehicle. In that case, a couple of days would have been good for that person, I guess, but I, maybe I can talk to you more-
From the person who lives next door to that.
Yeah.
And they, they've been looking at it for a little while.
That's true.
And they've been like, "Should I call? Should I not call?" They don't wanna, like Gene said earlier, they don't wanna raise a stick because it's their neighbor. And then they finally get the nerve to call, and it's 14 days later, well, now you have to give them 20 more days because of our code. No, zero. I mean, that's what I think.
Well, it sounds like we're, we're, we can bring this before you guys, and we can have the conversation about amending the language at, at the dais, and we can have that conversation.
There's only situations where somebody might not be able to fix their flat tire.
Bill has the ability and the big way to make some different judgments depending on what Bill finds out.
Right.
Well, like Mr. McNeil said, some of them may actually be working on repairing the car and have to wait on parts. Most of those people, when they get the letter from me, they call me and tell me, "I, hey, I ordered the stuff from O'Reilly's, it's gonna take like seven or eight days to get it." I, I've sat there and said, "Can you show me a bill or send me an email with a picture of the bill that showed you paid for it and the delivery date, and I'll give you an extension to three or four days past that." And about 60% of the people are cooperating enough, they do that, because they know that if I'm, if I'm willing to work with them a little bit, and I know that it's a legitimate reason for why it's extended, then it, it kinda helps me work with them and get them taken care of, and then I can get them into compliance, we can get things taken care of, and I'm not overloading the court docket with citations and being ultra-strict to the letter of the ordinance. I like that leniency.
Speaking of leniency and, and being able to, to work, number five, provide carve-out for children's toys under outdoor storage. Currently, depending on how strict Mr. Lynn wanted to be, he could go around and cite people for children's, uh, children's toys out on their front yard. We generally don't do that, but we want to make that explicit in the code.
A lot of bikes lay outside in my neighborhood, and then one of these days they're gonna come out, they're gonna be gone, I'm gonna go get left, and then hitch for three days. What'd you expect?
Situation for adding this in there is, one of the things that, that I have learned at several of the trainings I've went to, is that wording like "not limited to" are quickly making their way out of ordinances, because more and more courts are ruling in favor of the citizens if there are not specific wording in the ordinance that defines out, "This is a violation and this is why." And we have several ordinances that are, that are extremely vague in their wording, and if someone really wanted to fight it, there's a good possibility we could lose it in court. And by putting a clause in there about children's toys, now I'm not worried about bicycles or a couple of things here, but if I drive somebody's house and it looks like a Toys R Us truck exploded in their front yard or their backyard, then it gives me the ability to sit there and knock on the door and say, "You gotta put some of this stuff up, you can't just have it out here strung all over everywhere." It, it gives me a tool to work with, it's not necessarily one that I have to go out and enforce with an iron fist, but having that wording in there, just like the pet, the pet fence thing, kinda make it to the same rules and compliance as people putting a regular fence up. You can't have it in the right of way, you can't have it right on the property line without the adjoining property owner's permission. It, it puts, it puts a standard into that ordinance that gives me something to enforce if it became necessary to do so.
Six is clarify the city's position regarding firewood storage and maintenance of landscaping. Currently, somebody could tear down a, or cut down a tree, cut it up, and then say, "I'm stacked, I've stacked firewood," just leaving it essentially where they dropped it. We're trying to clarify what firewood actually means, and we, and then with landscaping, currently brush, not brush, shrubs and the like, we don't have any, again, going back to what Bill just said, we don't have a, "Hey, your shrubs need to be taken care of as well, just like your grass," and so this is giving us that tool, if we need it. Number seven, extend period of time residents have to clear sidewalks of ice and snow. Currently, the regulation states 24 hours, we're looking to maybe extend that to 48 hours to give folks two days. That's not necessarily something that we go around and enforce all that often, but it is good to have if and when we need it. And then the last three here, eight, nine, and 10, all say multiple under their, under the sections, because there are a couple of things that we just wanted to give you a heads up that we will be suggesting need to be amended, including the removal of the requirement of, of insect screens. Okay?
I could, I could see where if I was the renter and the owner didn't have insect screens, I don't wanna live with flies.
Well, that, that is, that's fair.
I understand that, but by the letter, the way that the code is written, if you've got a big picture window in your house, you have to have a screen over it. Every single window in your house would have to have a screen. I don't know anybody that puts a screen over their solid picture window that doesn't open.
Doesn't even know what it is.
No, but by the code, we'd have, you'd have to have one on there.
Does it have to function? Does it slide up and down?
Maybe that's, maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's the fix. Maybe instead of deleting that, maybe that's the fix. Remove redundant sections and correct errors in code. Like I mentioned at the top, there are a number of places where it references, the code references divisions in the city that don't exist, that are redundant, that we deal with the exact same thing and almost the exact same language, but it's just slightly different, that, let's pick one, right? And so we'll suggest the ones that we wanna keep. And then a slightly larger change, currently there are definitions scattered throughout the code. What we are looking to do is establish a one appendix for all definitions to govern all, the usage of all the words within, and so you can go and you can say, "This is what this is defined as." And so we would be moving, we would amend by say, "Please see section, or appendix E for the definitions in this, of these words in, in this, in this section."
What was the rationale to extend the clearing of sidewalks? I'm just curious.
There are days when it's, is harder to, to get out the day after a snow than it is, and then some days it, you know, 24 hours will fix some people's sidewalks.
Yeah, I mean, but do we clear the sidewalks for kids to walk that are not walking on the street? I mean, the purpose of a code or, is what? I thought it was safe. So clear the sidewalks so the kids aren't walking on the street, uh, to school.
Sure.
Since we have tons of kids walking to school now because of the bus situation of two-mile radius or whatever it is now.
Let me, let me give you a, I, I think I understand-
I'm not saying people do it or they don't do it, Jesse. What I'm saying is-
I'm the HOA president of my home association, and we have a sidewalk that has to be cleared, and a resident doesn't do it. We, why, we hire a snow removal company to it, and sometimes they're so busy, they can't get there within 24 hours. They show up, you know, the next day and clear it. So that's where I think, yeah, about with that code.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, so normally if we have a big snowstorm, school's normally out that day.
Sure.
You know? So I, you know, a 24-hour period would be that next morning.
Well, it's 24 hours after the snow stops.
Yes.
Yeah.
Before it starts.
Yeah.
So, things-
Forty-eight hours. I'm just saying it could still have a lot of snow on there and they got school going, and then kids tend to not wanna walk in, you know, deep snow, so they'll go to the street where we do a good job of clearing.
Right.
And then you got, kind of, what I would consider a safe catch.
So, again, this was, was a, get the, get the wheels in motion for this change, these changes, to generally gauge reaction. I think right now what, it seems like most of the changes would be at least open for conversation here, and if you guys said during the, during the meeting, "And let's strike this change," and not bring this one, but we'll approve the other ones. The big thing moving forward for us now would be the rental registration. Again, that's a bigger project. We don't necessarily want to waste a bunch of time doing, laying the groundwork if that's not something that you guys are going, "Yeah, we really want to do." Is that something that we should keep the work that we've already done?
Everybody's in favor of that.
I mean, it's already being done in Leavenworth for obvious reasons.
Sure.
That's something we should have had a long time ago, I think, but-
Okay, cool. Then we will continue and start reaching out to stakeholders regarding that. Are there any other questions for us regarding?
Going back to the snow removal.
Sure.
I understand your reasoning for extending it. What about commercial properties?
Thank you.
What about what?
Commercial properties.
You go up down Main Street, all these business, got their parking lots clean, but they haven't touched their sidewalks.
Sure.
There's a lot of traffic on Main Street.
Yep, sure.
That's true.
So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I'm gonna cut that.
Hey, we might wanna look at our code, so I think, didn't we, unless we've got written on it, and I don't remember, the city's responsible for the sidewalk up and down K7.
Some of the ones on K7 we are responsible for.
Some of we are.
So what I'm cautioning is that I'm sure Bill would certainly appreciate this, if you go out and start having citations issued after 24 hours, whatever you guys decide, we better be good too.
Right.
Cause the first thing a citizen's gonna say is, "What about your sidewalk?"
To, to get back to your point two, I mean the-
That's my point, that's my question, you know? We're gonna rewrite this ordinance, you know, snow removal has been a problem, the 20 years I've been sitting on this dais, always. Not so much in the residential areas, but along our commercial areas. Now, I know we clear along K7, cause I see our guys out there doing it, but what about like Eisenhower, along the old golf course net? Last year during them snowstorms, that piece of sidewalk that's on our side of the line was not touched, never. And people walked there, cause it got beat down and whatever. So how do we, how do we word that so that we can make those property owners do what they're supposed to do?
Maybe we, maybe we split the, so I'm looking at the code right now, maybe we split that into a resident, if zone residential, 48 hours, if zone commercial industrial, 24. Something to that effect.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean by turn off, three off. Would you please provide details?
Any staff will-
Sir, he's listening.
K7, for example, it's our responsibility, we take care of it. KOD comes along and pushes all the slush right back across, now that after the reps, Bill and the crew, where we take care of it. Same thing's gonna happen in Eisenhower. They'll say that, that businesses up and down are taking care of it themselves. We come by, or the city, county, whoever comes by, their covers are right back up. Who's at fault?
I can tell you, the same thing happens to residents. I'm out there at 70 years old, getting, getting the sidewalk in my driveway done, and here comes the crew, and it's right back up there. What do I do? I go out there and shovel it.
You get credit for clearing it.
If over, if over 68, you get credit for, for clearing it.
Well, Don is absolutely correct. I've been here for a long time, I think, maybe, Don's maybe the only one's been here longer, maybe, but on this dais here, is that you will never have a hot, more hot topic issue, well, James, hot topic issue than snow removal.
I had the same problem in Leavenworth. I own commercial businesses up in Leavenworth, state of Leavenworth, have the same problem, clear the sidewalk, sitting plow it all right back shut. And guess what I did? I gotta go right back out there and clean it off again.
Well, and the worst thing too is now it's treated snow they push on there, that now it's iced, it's now just a block.
You don't just push it off there, you chunk it out with a shovel and it's terrible, but-
Well, we've all seen it, you know, there's like-
But to your point, commercial properties are gonna have the same issue if we have a bad enough snow. They're gonna have a snow removal company that comes in and they're working here, they're working in Leavenworth, they're working in Baser, you know, they're working in Bonner. If it's a big enough snow, it might be 48 hours before they can get here, depending on where you're at on their list. So I think part of it is the fact that you're gonna have to look at it situation by situation again. Well, I guess I think they're-
That makes sense to me.
You know?
Look at it situation by situation. I like the, the one area I'm talking about, along the old golf course up there.
Right, that's a whole other-
The last couple winters, that sidewalk has never been touched.
And that's my, when I'm thinking of Main Street, I'm thinking, "Okay, it stopped snowing two days ago."
Right.
But you still haven't done anything about your sidewalk. So, I don't know.
Yeah, and it's bad on Leavenworth side too, especially down there past, they have that eye doctor place there, it's never cleared off. Guys are walking, they're riding, they're right on the side of the, where they push the amount of snow, which is like a lane and a half. It's just ridiculous. So I, I mean, if the commercial side, probably they need more time than the residential, I feel like 48. If you wanna make it 48, I don't, I'm just thinking school, time.
I think it, whatever we do, it should be something that, that we can enforce, and that, when that is inviol, when that is violated, that Bill or whoever goes out there and gets with those property owners or those commercial owners and say, "Hey, you haven't touched your sidewalks yet, how, how come? You know, what's gonna go on?"
I know we had an issue this last winter with the-
Yeah, here on Mary Street.
Mary Street, with kids trying to get to school, just like you spoke about there.
The problem is, is most of the people that live on that street, where the sidewalk and sidewalk, sidewalk is, they're elderly, they can't do it theirself, so they have to wait until they can get someone to pay to come out and do it. Now, this year, I went out and hung door hangers on, I didn't issue violation letters, but I hung door hangers out, they had the ordinance on there, and with the exception of one neighbor that's actually capable of doing it himself, most of them got it taken care of within a day or so. The other gentleman, I, I got cussed at and threatened for about 15 minutes straight in his driveway, and, but he still went out and did it. And his biggest complaint was, "Why should I scrape my sidewalk off when the city goons are gonna come by and bury my driveway and bury the sidewalk again, and I'm not gonna keep cleaning up after them?" And that was probably the most politest and realistic thing he said in our conversation. But it was that same problem, but that was one that someone had actually called and complained about. complained about. And I went out and hung door hangers out there, because it seemed to work a little better than.
You didn't tell him, because if someone slips on that sidewalk and they fall and break their neck, they sue you because it's your sidewalk?
Well, that's usually the part of the conversations, and most people are understanding about it, and they try and get something done, but about 20% of the people, it, it's a fight.
Well, if, if it's the safety and the kids in the street that we're concerned about, what about using something to the effect of 24 hours on scheduled school days, it'll be cleared? I mean, if that's what you're really after, is getting it cleared so kids are out of the street, that's tight for that.
Yeah, we could look at that, and we could see if we could find other, other ordinances like that.
Carve-out for schools out due to weather, extended to 48, something like that.
If they're not calling school anyway.
I mean, yeah, if it's vacation week and they're not gonna be at school, it's not gonna be used, then you can do 48 hours, and it's not gonna impact kids.
Okay. Okay. Kids these days, they have phones though, so. Anything else?
No, that's, anybody got anything?
It's a lot. I, I threw a lot at, at you guys, and I appreciate the, the feedback and the conversation. But any other questions?
What you wanted to address first, would you come to the next council meeting?
No, no, no. We will probably be shooting for either late September or early, early October, depending on the agendas.
I thought you said.
Because in the meantime, Bill asks us to go out.
Right. Bill, so I mean, let me reemphasize, Bill and Dan have done the yeoman's work on this project, making sure which, looking at the, the sections that need to be amended and all that stuff. But yeah, they.
If you can't court her, if you don't want to watch this, but.
That's right, yeah, no, if you, if we just put a moratorium on code enforcement right now, we can get this knocked down like a week, so.
Anyone else got anything? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, Jen.